We're covering it.
Sketching.
Moving to journey.
Good thing to pay.
It's great.
Three.
We should have made your trips, right? Like crazy plums, so.
But no, he just wants to listen to the chairman.
All right, we live. All right, six o'clock, let's get started. Uh, so first, let's start with, um, let's see if there's public comments. Steve, you have something you want?
No comment.
No comment? Okay.
You see that beautiful?
Yeah, yeah, what what's this about?
Remember the Young Business Association?
I've heard rumors of it.
Well, it doesn't exist anymore. It's still. We got involved in some projects. They chaired a beautification committee. And we had some interesting people noted in what you've gotten from one of you. Um, and what we came up with were some ideas and some suggestions for the city project. They all did the project. One of them's already been completed. Project biggest one. Is on page three, I believe.
Okay. Does it tell us the topic you wanna highlight? Yeah.
It lists the project. Then we were proposing. Okay.
Like talking. They just, uh, purpose of this is door.
Well, you.
Clarify for me please.
Talking a little bit about beautification. And I just wanted to highlight this out. The only thing FYI for you. It's beautification. For me, it's a big deal for the others. And continue the program. Okay, then I just want to add is that I found that would share.
Okay. I appreciate it, guys. Okay, so well, then we'll dive into our beautification grant. Review presentation.
Presentation mode. Okay, there we go. So on your agenda, we did, um, we started out with the twenty twenty four beautification grant, but we decided since we've done this, we've had this grant for three years now that we would go ahead and highlight all three years that we've done. So you guys can kind of have a recap of what's, um, all of the grants over the last three years. So we created the program in twenty twenty two and council approves for those resolutions six two four. Um, and it was to improve neighborhoods and other areas of the community. Each year, there's been twenty five thousand dollars that has been approved in the budget for that. And to date, we have funded thirteen grants and those are reimbursable. They have to be spent first. They turn in proof of, um, what they've spent. Uh, we make sure the project was completed and then we issue them a reimbursement. And so applicants can get a grant up to five thousand dollars. Um, for larger projects, and if they apply a second time, they can get up to twenty five hundred is the max they can get for a second. Um, and then after that, we don't keep funding.
So they can apply for a beautification grant twice, and after that, they can never do it again?
Kind of how that's how it's laid out currently. Um, we did brought an update before you in January of twenty twenty three to update the timeline, so it was consistent each year. But you know, after we got through that first year, we realized that we needed to have consistency every year. So in January, we start advertising the previous year's projects. In February, the application process opens and applications are due by the first Friday in March at five P M. Every year. The committee reviews them in April and we bring them forward to council for approval. And then all their projects have to be completed in September. That was a little bit of a learning curve too. The first year we had some landscaping over here on the corner. And the project got done more towards the end of the year, and they weren't able to do some of their plantings until the following spring because it was just too late in the year. So a lot of times landscaping is involved in some of these, so we up. Um, change the date to have the projects completed by September. And then they have to turn in all of their paperwork by October fifteenth to get reimbursed for their grant. That way we have time to process it. We can get it done all bef- before the year end. So twenty twenty two was our very first year. We funded thirteen thousand six hundred sixty six dollars. Um, we did funded a mural, painted a commercial building, neighborhood mailbox, and then a garden rock beautification project. So the mural was on the back of the P T L flooring building that faces the Yelmton I O Trail. So as you can see, it was kind of overgrown and, um, the mural was a nice upgrade. Um, we helped paint the outside of the Masonry Cafe building. Um, using colors that were approved for the historic building to keep it with its original architecture. Um, neighborhood mailbox wrap. And then landscaping at the corner of five oh seven and five ten by Tim's Pharmacy. And as you know, like this is the original picture, didn't have the plantings. They did purchase the plants prior, and they showed us receipts. They had purchased the plants. And they were, um, keeping them in the greenhouse over the winter months, so they planted them in the spring. And then I think as you've all probably seen, they've continued to upgrade that area this year and do additional improvements. Um. This, that was kind of the start of, um, changing and upgrading the landscaping there.
Yeah, it looks way better now.
The twenty twenty three, we funded nineteen thousand six hundred and forty one grant dollars in grants. Um, kind of great. There's such pathway resurfacing and then installation of a patio. The sign upgrade, I'm sure you guys have all seen that when you drive down, um, on the road on Yelm Avenue. Um, that entire property was, that was a portion of a big project that was going on at the time. Church at on Jefferson Avenue, they installed a sprinkler system. And the pictures on the, the after pictures of the sprinkler system don't really look that great because as you know, when you're installing a sprinkler system, you're tearing up the grass. So, um, they did have to have a little bit of, uh. I mean, they had to tear it up to get the sprinkler system in, um, in an effort to keep it green and looking nice throughout the summer months.
It does look nice because I drive by it all the time.
Um, the.
Blocks for my shop.
Pathway resurfacing was in the Mountain Sunrise Development. Um, the path that was there was cracking, um, uneven. And so they resurfaced that path that leads to the Yelmton I O Trail. So it made it nice for them to be able to use that. The patio installation at the back of the White Horse Tavern on the right, you can see that what it looked like previously. Um, I think that outdoor seating got started during the COVID times when people had to be outside. Um, so they did a big project to the backside of their building. And so this, the portion of the beautification grant was for the patio. But also as a portion of a larger project.
Looks impressive.
Yeah.
And then this year, twenty twenty two, council funded twenty two thousand three hundred and thirty six dollars. Um, we replaced some single pane windows and doors. We upgraded landscaping, new fence and reseeding grass, sign upgrades and a mural. The Car Star Building on the right had the old single pane windows and then the old same thing, the glass door. So those were all upplayed graded with black framed windows and then the new door. The Yum's Lions Club, there's a lot of greenery and a lot of color in some of these, so it's kind of hard to see a little bit, but, um, this top picture, I don't know, you don't see my cursor right here. This picture here is the side of the building where everything was overgrown. So they had someone come in and trim, uh, clean it up and plant new plants. And then you've got the ramp, you can see the view of the front of the ramp. They tore all of the old shrubs that were there. Um, cleaned it up, bought new plants and planted, and then the same thing, um, you know, along the side there. The Boys and Girls Club at the Old City Hall Building, as you know, had a fence that was not in compliance with the Yom Municipal Code. Um, so the grant helped them replace the fence with the black fencing to bring that in compliance and then also reseed the field area where the kids play. Um, sign upgrades at Bill's Towing. Their sign on the right. You know, was still fine, but they upgraded it, um, with the veteran flags on there and then did additional landscaping around the bottom of the sign.
Have you talked to him about removing that U-Haul sign off? That blocks that?
Oh, I don't.
His advertisement for his business on what he does. You want him to take that down?
The U-Haul that's on the fence on the outside, it's a.
And does he rent U-Hauls? Does he want people to know what he does?
Apparently, but it blocks that. Kind of a shame. Like you spend this money to build this beautiful thing, and then you have it blocked out by a U-Haul sign. It's kind of odd.
And then lastly, we, the beautification grants funded the mural on the side of the Bob's Bar and Grill Building. That's it. Any questions?
So are we looking at about sixty five total to date over the three years? What's like, what's the close rough amount that we?
Probably ish.
Okay, that's not bad.
Uh, in reference to the landscaping projects, uh, how? Well, from twenty twenty two. Are they, is it, uh, keeping up? Uh, and what I'm asking is sometimes some people, they do, they self do their own landscaping to save money. They go out and buy their plants and all. Uh, are we providing any kind of aid to them in reference to the master gardener that kind of says, hey, these are good? This, this will work really well. Hold it here. This will overgrow and get you back to the starting position again? Okay.
I believe if we, if we took that route, I think we would take, go, spend money well over the grants that are, that were allocated.
I was gonna say the master gardener.
We don't, um, yeah, I don't know.
It's not our lane. They can apply, we can give them money, that's it. Sorry, I should have raised my hand on that.
Stay safe now, please, here. We're informal here.
Okay.
Oh, I think Steve wanted to comment on it.
Just to go. Some of these look like they're not way of beautification projects. The two that jump out at me are replacing, um, the service on a sidewalk. That's kind of a safety issue possibly, but beautification, I don't know about that. Um, in that cyclone fence, same thing. Um, some of these are almost, um, structural things. Um, and I would just suggest that you be kind of be careful, maybe even tighten up the criteria a little bit. So that the beautification is obvious to the public. That the public can see that you can complete bank three dollar. And right now, some of these, they're invisible to the public, totally invisible. So that's my suggestion. Maybe tighten the criteria, indicate that the project should be highly visible to the public.
There are.
They're paying for it.
And like you said, they do make their criteria, they do meet the criteria that's been set by the council. Um, we, I mean, absolutely, the council could try to tighten it up if they want to, but there have been, um, many applicants that do not meet those thresholds. And that aren't, um, they have been denying that as well. So it's more than just those people who got awarded it, the applicants. So there are for those exact reasons, um, that the, um, committee deliberates on and, um, doesn't always select that. But that is a consideration that they do take.
Just a suggestion.
Well, looking back, Steve, I agree with you completely and looking back on your business, um. I wish we could have gone back and said, yeah, let's start on the main road where you see the most visibility, the most impact for what we're doing and then work from there. But at the time, we were so grateful to just get monies and have people go through the application process. And I think it's taken a few years to catch on. People are getting it, and I hope more run business people will ask us to help them do something nice. I agree with you. I, I personally didn't like the sprinkler system. I mean, like, you know. But we didn't have enough people ask for the money, so I think that was part of it.
Well, it can't change the progress much. You stop getting about the future. So infrastructure, that's a separate thing. So none of this kind of false, you have a category of infrastructure.
Um, when did, when did this beautification grant become a thing?
Three years ago.
Three years ago, we decided that we were going to take public money and give it to private businesses to beauti- beautify their businesses?
That is correct.
And eight oh eight. Uh, well, I can tell you from where I'm sitting, I don't agree with that at all. You know, I'm, I, I have a business and the last thing I'm looking for is the city to give me money to improve my business. You know, as a citizen, I'm a little surprised, honestly. But I mean, maybe I'm missing something here.
Um. Uh, cause I remember the discussion that, uh, kind of started this whole thing. Uh, we had a beautification, uh, fund, but there was no. I don't want to use terminal rhyme or reason to it, but there was money set to the side that was to use to help beautify. And it was done by the city of, you know, maybe workbench is various other things. And the council at the time when this was developed, they wanted to kind of rein that in and say, you need to come up with a program in reference to this beautification. And so this was the route that they decided to go at that time. It was to have.
You know, do you know where that funding originated from? You said there was a pot of, of money sitting there?
Money that, and.
I know where, because I asked for money in the budget to begin beautification of the downtown corridor. And then that was my project. And then things went a little bit willy nilly and everything went askew. And then that eventually formed into this beautification committee, which was modeled after the one in Olympia. So they do the same thing.
Well, I'm looking at the date on this information we got from Steve and it's dated, uh, the two thousand and fifteen.
That's not, that's not.
So you're not referring that.
That's a separate person or private.
So the funding is coming from young citizens.
General budget money, yep.
Once again, as a citizen, that's, I'm kind of going, wait a minute, you're spending my money to help other people's businesses as a business owner. You, you know.
As a council member, you voted on these items though, and you approved them. You approved a few of these.
Three years ago?
No, this year.
Voted up, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm asking about is just the whole concept in general. I mean, I understand beautification, that makes sense. However, it just seems like that's above and beyond what the city should be doing with the funding they're collecting from the citizens. Cause this is, it seems to me anyway, that we're giving money to individuals that we're collecting from the entire community that the, I wouldn't even say the majority of the community is reaping the benefits of this.
We just did that with those three groups that we approved money for.
Those, we're looking at sprinkler systems. We're looking at murals. You know, we're looking as, as Steve mentioned, we're looking at sidewalk repair. I just don't, I fail to see where that's beautification. The, the grant, the money that you were referencing that we gave to other, other, uh, organizations, that had nothing to do with beautification. That has to do with.
City money that we gave to.
I understand, but that has to do with city development and city improvement, not beautification.
That's the same thing.
Well, yeah, but we are, the difference is we're spending, we're spending that money on helping a, a large group of people. This is a, a money we're spending on individual businesses.
The same thing with kids without, or parents without students or parents, adults without children. You know, you pay taxes for schools, but you don't necessarily go to school.
We all reap the benefits from that.
Yeah, I'd say we reap some of this, and clean beautiful streets and beautiful, uh, frontage for businesses too.
But as a business owner, that's my individual responsibility. If I want to have a viable business, I'm going to spend the money to make sure my building is painted. Make sure my, you know, my grass is green and my parking lot's clean. That's my responsibility as a business owner.
Council has, uh, voted year after year to fund this. Um, to believe in the priorities of beautifying and ensuring those businesses and nonprofits do have the ability and funds needed to, to beautify that area. Some, some businesses can't afford to paint their frontage and the council decided that isn't important enough, um, item to, to go ahead and, and support with taxpayer money.
Well, and the other thing is we gotta remember, it's all an incentive. So they have to prove that they can do it first. They have to come out of their pocket first.
That's true.
When the job is complete and when things are shown to be a difference or a change, then we look at it and say, okay, you're worthy of the reimbursement. So it's not so much for just giving you money to do whatever you want. Prove to us that you care about this community just as much as we do and your business. And we want to say, hey, great job. We'll support that. So it's kind of an incentive. It's not just we're giving money away. And I think it does help benefit the community in a way where when you have nicer buildings and cleaner streets, you have less traffic of transient and homeless and vandalism. And I'm just putting that all together. This is a, this is a statistic that shows when you keep things clean and landscaping is clean, you have less vandalism in your area. So I, I'm all for this, uh, beautification and I understand where you're coming from. I just think that we've got a, this is an incentive. It's not just, here's free money, do what you want. They do the work first, they come out of pocket first, then we approve it and like, oh, give them the money, they did good.
There are groups that don't get the money because they don't meet the require, the criteria that was set forth by council.
I understand, you're talking incentives though, and my incentive to keep my property improved and cleaned and is profit. That's why I'm in business. That's the, I can't imagine any more of an incentive than that, keeping people employed, you know, keeping my, uh, roof over my head, incentive.
This is. Yeah, um, and I know where you're coming from. I, I understand, uh, cause I remember the discussion three years ago when we were putting this all together. One of the, one of the talking points that was brought up was a private business, that's their responsibility. The Lions Club, yes, they are private, but they're also a, uh, charitable organization. To help them out, this, that's what this fund could be used for, to assist with an area that is utilized by the community in some form that might be run by a nonprofit or something like that. So there, you know, there was the.
Agencies for that too, though.
Right, but, uh, but the, uh, you know, that, that, that was some of the issues that were discussed. And I understand what you're saying.
But wouldn't that be appropriate, pardon, pardon the interruption, but wouldn't that be appropriate for the Lions to approach it the same way these other groups did? And come to us in that aspect of, hey, look, we, we look, we were asking for some money for our nonprofit, just like the rest of these folks, like the money we just sold up, including for the senior center. Cause I get, I get you, Brian. I'm a hundred percent with you on that. The Lions Club, yeah, that's one of our civic organizations that's helping out our, our, a lot of times our elderly community members that are the ones that are most, uh, in need of assistance.
Uh, but I think the reason why this grant was developed was because there was that money that was for beautification that nobody was properly, or according to some, was not properly being doled out. And, you know, it's, I don't know. I mean, I think in some ways that we could work on trying to change it. I just don't know that for me right now, the direction, I don't know which direction to go. And so.
Let me answer then.
That literally led into my question. Are you proposing a change for the way that it's been going? It's a fair.
I just think it leaves us kind of exposed for the problems. Because the.
How would, so what, what's been done has been done, right?
Right, no, and I get that.
Yeah, so we could all get fired up over little things or pieces of, you know, ones that maybe we agreed or didn't agree on, but what? Can we change these things? We're taking applications, what, February?
We probably couldn't change this cycle, but the next one we could. I mean, it's, it's fairly close to when we start have to advertise and, um, and start talking about it, but, and it's, it's already funded through the budget.
The amount was approved in the budget then.
I mean, council wants to.
Make changes.
Take a look at it and re, um, reexamine it. I don't see why we couldn't, um, adjust it if there's certain things that council wants. And we could put it to a study session, but if there's, I, I don't want to, if you put it up for a study session, we're not going to make suggestions. So if there are suggestions um, that you want and you do want to make changes, let us know and then we could absolutely put it up for a study session and.
And I think there's probably some changes to be made, but we gotta kind of think about this like, uh, I don't know, Disney's Cars Radiator Springs. Um, when you start upgrading and taking care of one place and then somebody sees you making that thing nicer and better. All of a sudden, you want to keep up with their Jones? It's like, hey, they painted their building. I want to paint my building. And then.
Of course, they're using my money to paint their building.
I understand that and I respect you for that comment, but what I'm saying is it takes something of an initiative for somebody to start a thing. And so I look at the city as commending them like, hey, way to put that initiative out there. Because it's not something like, so we don't have to give away the money and people don't apply. Here's the trick. People are applying. Well, Doug, get on. They want to make this city better. And that's, that's the thing. I think it's wise. It's not necessarily free money. It's taxpayer money going back into. And then guess what? You can access this money in the form of a grant. And get some of that money that you paid from your hard work and get it back to upgrade some arts and beautification in their facility.
My money. You have to apply.
Well, and I respect people like that too. I get that about.
I don't mind helping out my community, but we're talking about something totally different here. We are, we're, let's say if, if just prime example, he mentioned the sign in front of the sign that we paid for as citizens out there in front of Bill's Towing. And of course, well, why shouldn't he take his sign down? Well, okay, there we have a conflict because we, the citizens paid for that sign and it's beautification aspect of it. Yet we, we, the citizens aren't enjoying it because he has a, a U-Haul sign in front of it.
Gotcha. That makes sense to a point. What I'm understanding is though.
Casing his business. How is he gonna excel his business?
Well, as a whole, it looks nicer, which brings more people to our community because if our community look like a dump, ain't nobody want to show up here. So I mean, there's going to be some pros and cons. I get it. Let's say, yeah.
I totally agree with your point, hundred percent.
Yeah.
But it was in the budget. You just made the point, we can amend the budget even if it's.
Exactly. So that's what you would have to look at doing.
He wants to say something.
Steve wants to say.
Steve.
Okay.
Sure.
We are informal tonight. Go for it.
Two quick comments. First of all, there are towns and cities all over Washington State who are doing what you're doing. They're promoting the arts, they're promoting beautification. So you just have to be careful. See if it doesn't turn into an infrastructure project like we're doing a sidewalk. But, uh, the other comment that I would make, you could include in your criteria that the emphasis is going, is going to be on the arts. Beauty. Beauty is beautification. So that would be just a suggestion I would float is emphasize the fact we want to promote artistic beauty in the city. Now, that could include landscaping in some way, or there are a lot of ways you define beauty, uh, in, but if it's kind of emphasizing an artistic approach, I think the city and the public is going to identify with that. Now, this mural of some Bob's Tavern is, is Leon benefiting from that? Maybe, but the city is benefiting because I can't tell you the number of people who talk about, that's a great mural. And the city benefits from it and the message, we, the people is perfect. So I put a mural on my building. And I got a lot of comments.
Looks great.
On that mural. So the more, like you said, Joe. The momentum can start to build. Who have more and more people kind of understanding the possibilities and the benefits. Um, that's going to contribute to the future of the city.
And I don't always get along with Steve Craig on topics, but hey, I'm with him tonight.
Yeah, I like the fixing that box and stuff. And then, um, we're like.
Two.
You know, like, hey, if that takes a lot of beautification to do it, let's do it. I mean, get it done. We found a way to do it.
I think those new sidewalks are pretty beautiful, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, uh, we're like the, for the beautification, as the way I saw it, like my mural on my building is, it has nothing to do with my business at all, like zero, like there's zero attention to the business. This helps to make Yelm a little nicer. Like I want to promote Yelm.
New season.
Yelm, people that walk the trail.
Oh, yeah, it was great.
A lot of people that see it, but there's no, like, you can't even see the side from my building from that, really, the point. And so that was the point of it, like it just highlights, you know, many beauty.
I'm going to encourage you to walk the trail.
Well, you feel a little safer when you're running along and you feel like, okay, somebody's cleaning that jazz up and there's.
A little tagged up.
Right, there's something there, then you're like, okay.
Somebody, somebody tagged my building and I fixed it. I mean, I just, what I'm, I guess my disconnect here is, is all of this responsibility of being a property owner or being a business owner. That's the, you sign up, you know, I signed up for it. Any business money, anybody who owns a business, he signed up for it. Anybody who owns any property, whether it's commercial or residential, you know, that's. The perfect walls faces the shell station in the road there. We can put a nice beautiful mural on that.
There's, there's grants available all over, like we're building this huge roundabout, right? With it. Is that a grant or is that just state funding? Yeah. I mean, that's, I think, I think.
It's not a grant, that's state funded project.
And you guys gotta remember, you got, you got two types of.
The little one's a grant, isn't it?
The little one will be.
More so.
Yeah.
So there's grants, there's student loans, there's all this kind of stuff. I, I feel that perhaps the key from what I'm taking is, is, is we need to really be on the same page as the council as far as what we're requiring and how we're going to be stewards of spending that money appropriately.
Well, but I respect Tracy in this, in this moment, because here's the thing, you got two types of people.
I'm not disrespecting, I'm not going to be very clear.
No, I know, I know you're not, but here's the thing is you've got two types of people, you've got people who would never ask for help.
Yeah.
They're going to take care of business on their own. And then you got people who aren't going to do anything unless there's some kind of incentive. And those are the ones that are showing up and that's okay too. So what happens though, the end result sometimes is when people see new things happening, new, new buildings being painted. Sometimes it just initiates a, a motion of, well, I'm going to go pay my building too. And so, but I respect you for that because that's kind of the person that I am is I will not ask anybody for help. The thing is there are those people who they won't make a move unless they know there's a, a resource out there. And if there's a resource out there that they can take hold of and take advantage of, then they will do it, which I think in the end will initiate these things. So I respect you for what you do. Cause I'm like, yeah, I, I like you for saying that. And then I like seeing the new stuff coming into town. Oh, that looks so good. And that would have never happened. If there wasn't an incentive from the city to say, here's an option. So at some point in a perfect world, people would just take care of their own property themselves and paint their own murals themselves. Uh, but sometimes we just need some assistance and some push.
I guess the question is, are you looking to amend the budget to remove the beautification grant?
I wouldn't say I'm looking to remove the beautification grant. I just believe we need to have a little bit clearer parameters as to what, you know, the definition of beautification is. As opposed to infrastructure or, uh, you know, just improvement, city improvements.
They want to see clear, clear definitions and maybe adjust those definitions. So that's something we can look at.
Well, the guidelines were approved by resolution, so it can definitely, you can amend that if you choose to.
What I'd recommend.
I can email it out to everyone. So you guys can all take a look at it if you'd like. And then
What I would recommend is after we get that email, we'll also take a look at what Mr. Craig, uh, passed out to us and see if we can find a good balance of promoting the arts, the beautification of the city to, in areas that benefit community members. And to address, uh, Councilmember Woods' concern that is not helping somebody that that's called your maintenance, you need to be doing that. As I say, I understand what, I understand where you're coming from. I understand that. But I also think that, you know, I look at the Lions Club. That, that, that was a good thing. Um, I voiced my opinion and references some of the other ones when we had those discussions. And I think one, something that we could take away from this is let's take a look at the way the, they set up right now. Reflect on it because I've scanned through this, this is almost a really nice, good outline to start from.
We have a beautification, uh, committee now?
Yeah, there is the committee and what we can do is, uh, Ms. Lynn Meyer will mail us out, email to all of us. What the requirements are now based upon the resolution. And sometime during this year, we can, we'll get changing that.
I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to add to that. As far as the Lions, I firmly agree with you that that's something as a community, we need to look out for. But once again, I don't think it's categorized right. I don't believe it should be under
And as I say, it's just, as I said, it's just one of those things we can take away.
Is it a date or the, the application is opening in?
I'd give it a whirl.
If we, if we could have a study session, Kathy, when the, uh, applicants come in and talk about this with the applicants on the table. That would be better because usually you just come and say, these are the ones that applied and we're going to grant. And we'd get to say yes, no, but if we could talk about it when the applications come in, that might be better.
Isn't that how it usually goes?
Maybe Josh gets to know. You're the only one on the, on the council.
I was on the last one, but not before that.
Well, they, they, they're open person, but none of us know what's going on until that time. That you bring it to us and say, these are the ones, vote yes.
That's everything that we, that should go on, ain't it? Almost, and all goes to committee.
Talk about it for 10 minutes. Like these are the things on the table. Is there anybody?
It's like the outside agencies. That's, that's what we did. We had a presentation, then we had the, you know, they came and they spoke.
But what if, what if you really have an objection to one of them? There's no time to talk about it at all. So I'm just, it's just a suggestion.
Similar to the way we
But on a study session before it comes for vote.
Yeah. Well, first we need to look at the, see if there's any changes. Well, can we do that for January? Yes, the, the guidelines, like wants to check out a criteria. If he wants to make a change or suggestion, yeah, it has to happen pretty quickly.
She's going to email it.
I was going to say, let's, this year, let's go ahead and keep it the way it is right now. Cause when it comes up and we start discussing them when presented, we can have our discussion, discussion points. I, I still remember when they were up last year, some of the points that were being brought up and I mean, I was criticized on one, one of my concerns.
All right. I, I hear you. Let's go ahead and, um,
But let's keep it the same, but use this coming year to discuss.
Let's, let's review it and see.
Yeah. So we'll do a review. We'll hold a special meeting. We weren't going to have a meeting, um, our normal fourth meeting anyway on Tuesday, but it's, let's just have that. It's, uh, December 24th. Um, we'll go ahead and talk, discuss it and we'll have something ready to, ready to go in January.
In December 24th.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
See?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's a study session. I, I, I know.
You got me there. I was like
Nobody has any objections, December 24th.
It's a, it's a pre-packed schedule for study session in January, but we'll, uh, write it in, um, we can adjust some other stuff. We will.
So that's the no on the 24th?
You want it, we can. We'll hold it.
Gosh.
Cancel it, but we can't hold it. We technically. Staff does it.
From Stephanie especially.
Over half an hour. Steve, you got a closing comment for us. Real quick, Steve.
Closing comment.
Yeah. If you have suggestions, please email it to council. Look up on the website. We have it on, on list. What the requirements are. If you have any suggestions, please email it to us. Josh.
Yep.
That's the man.
He administers the city.
That's right.
Yep. Chat with him and or Mayor. See what the committee does. All right. Any else on this? We good?
Well, I was on it last time.
And Greg did this for a study session, but either way we'll, uh, we will look at it and get council's input before we start.
Also has final standard criteria, right?
Absolutely.
Don't get mad if we don't like your idea, okay?
Traffic study.
Yeah, that's me. I have captions for our hearing impaired people for you. Um, so traffic, traffic in Yelp, I don't know how to turn it off right.
Stop watching it. You're going to struggle.
So, um, traffic in Yelp, this is something that was brought up multiple council meetings ago. We did like a little bit of about traffic and just kind of how it's flowed. This is going to go a little more in depth about everything, traffic in Yelp. You're going to be surprised. You're going to be astounded and it'll be, it'll be fun. So like all of great presentations, here's an overview of what we're going to talk about today. So first thing is traffic impact analysis. So those are called TIA's. I will reference it as a TIA from now on. So that way you don't have to remember traffic impact analysis, a trip generation report. Which is your? TGR. Thank you. Or TGV, which I don't know what the D stands for, but sometimes they call it TGV. Traffic throughout the years, TTTY. Uh, what is next? So.
Akron in there.
Win, which is also our motto for the city, win together. So I incorporated that on purpose. Welcome, inspire and nurture.
Beautiful.
I got it. Okay. If you have a question, please stop me because we're going to go through some stuff and it's going to sound unbelievable. And it's going, it's, it's gonna, cause I looked at the things, it's, it was unbelievable to me, right? It's always weird when you get data and it, to you, it goes, there's no way that's right, but it is actual data. And I know Josh, who really appreciates the numbers, we'll get, when we get there, I'll talk about it. Um, so a TIA is required, is not always required, but is requested. Um, but it is required on commercial development of how, or housing units over 24 units. So any commercial development comes down. So say tomorrow Costco says we want to come to town. They would have to do a TIA, a traffic impact analysis. And I'll explain kind of what that is. Um, a housing development over 24 units also has to do a traffic impact analysis. We can require a TIA for anything else. So if there's some, if a development comes in with six homes and they're on a particularly bad intersection, we can go, we want you to do a TIA for this intersection. Even though our code doesn't require it, we have the option to require it. That usually doesn't happen. Um, like a single family home, we wouldn't say do a TIA. You're generating one trip. You're probably not going to cause a big issue. But sometimes there might be a housing development on a really bad intersection. And it might be a small housing development. We go, bleh, you should probably do a TIA just in case you're impacting this intersection too much. Um, so trip generations can be used, uh, they can use a manual. There's a manual that came out. It's like 17 volumes and they're each like this. And they have all of these examples of how many trips a certain size business rep, uh, would generate. So when there is like a drive-through, how much a fast food restaurant would generate. There's a special section just for In-N-Out Burger. Um, there's a section in there for hair salon. How much a hair salon of this square footage? Does a hair salon offer esthetician stuff? There's how much it generates. So it has literally how many trips each of these businesses and has case study. So thousands, a bunch of traffic engineers put these together, has thousands of case studies that show what kind of trips can be generated based on the square footage and similar uses. So someone could use that if I was a, oh, wanted to open a fast food restaurant, say I wanted to come in town and open a Wendy's. I could look at this manual and go, okay, it says I will generate about five trips per hundred square feet I do. That's just a number. It's not accurate. And so if I'm building a thousand square foot building, I now know I'm generating 50 new trips. So I can use that and I can do that as a cookie cutter from this manual. Or I can do a TIA, a full-blown TIA and say, actually I'm going to generate less because I don't agree with what the manual is saying. You have to prove that with your TIA. It's a really cool device and we use it. It's really good for businesses that maybe are like mom and pops or just single owned because they don't have the money to do a TIA. They can't spend the, you know, $10,000, $12,000, but they can use a trip generation manual, which we have that they can use as their, hey, this is how many trips I'll generate. I'll accept that as my trip generation. Um, a TIA, and I'll show you an example of TIA after this, because you're probably all asking, well, what does a TIA look like? I will show you that after this. A TIA includes a detailed analysis of nearby intersection proposed impacts. So when they first, a project comes in, um, they look at nearby intersections and they propose, these are the intersections we feel like we will impact, and this is what we're going to study on. We send those proposals to a third party that's a chip generation report and say, this is what they're expecting to impact. And the third party will say, yes, we agree with that or no. And the third party, we have two right now, SCJ and Fair and Pears are our two independent consultants we use. And they'll say, yep, we agree with that impact. And then we'll go back to them and go, yes, you can use those intersections as what you'll impact. Then they do their analysis based on those impacts. I'll show you one of those next. Really kind of cool. Um, TIA's, there's a reviewed by a third party unrelated to the project. The reason we have two independent third-party reviewers is because sometimes they will do work for businesses in town. So say the school district, for example, they use stellar, or they use, um, SCJ Alliance for their trip generation, traffic impact studies. Well, we can't use SCJ to review SCJ's work because that'd be, to me, it'd be a conflict of interest. Um, so we hire, uh, we have two on board. So if one's doing one, the other one can review it. That hasn't always been the case, but that's something our, this new, we, we developed when I came on board in the new administration said, we need to have two because we can't have conflict of interest. Which is a really good thing. Cause you don't want someone, you, you've ever reviewed your own work? Oftentimes you don't see the problems. It's always good to have a separate set of eyes to review your work.
Do you have a question? I do have a question, uh, Director Colt, in reference to the intersections. We, we as the community being affected, we don't point out what intersections, the person is doing development gets to choose what intersections.
Yes and no. Um, they propose what intersections they think they're affecting and we can say, no, you are affecting these ones also and you need to do these. Um, or we can go, yes, you are correct. Majority of the time they will, they're, they're use, and I'll show you with this one. They use evidence of why they would affect those intersections. So example, a, a business that say this was building right now. They wouldn't probably do a study on 103rd and Walmart Boulevard of what trips are going to generate here, because by then you don't know if it's your trip that's out that far, right? They would probably do an intersection of Second Street. Here, probably a Mazmin, because a lot of people use that as an exit, maybe on Third Street leaving, because those are all places people will exit that area and go onto the main drag. Um, and here's the fun part, and you'll see this several times. If an impact is shown to an intersection, often developer will have to pay for the improvements. So if they come in and they show a detrimental impact to an intersection, lowering it, causing issues, they have to fix it. They have to either make the upgrades, they have to spend the money on it, or they have to pay a fee associated with that project to pay part of that.
So this, go ahead. Point the developer says, oh, no thanks. That's too expensive. I'm out.
Correct. A lot of times if it is too expensive, like they will pull out. They go, hey, this is too much. I can't do this. We'll pull out or they'll say, that's fair. We'll do it. Example given, um, Toma Ranch over on Toma Boulevard is causing a lot of issues to the Long Meyer intersection. So Long Meyer and 50510. That intersection right by GG's quilts, they're causing a lot of issues. So their normal traffic impact fees would be probably about $500,000 for the trips they're generating. But because they're causing those issues, they have to pay 80% of that intersection improvements. They're paying about $900,000. And they're willing to do that because they know they're going to affect that. Um, so another developer that came in would, and they were affecting the intersection would probably have to pay the rest of that. To make us that 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars to build a traffic light there at Long Meyer. So this is an example of, sometimes it happens. Other example in the past, um, we had an Arby's that wanted to come in right across from Taco Bell. Uh, Wazdot showed that they were failing in their section over by Safeway. They were told they had to put in a roundabout. Roundabouts are about two million. They've said it's not worth us. The cost to get that up will have to take way too long. So they pulled out. Um, and that's how it works. A lot of times though, improvements will come. We have improvements on our STIP council. You passed a six-year transportation improvement plan. That plan guides us to fix those intersections on our own. So someone could wait. And once that intersection's improved through our project, then they can come in and just pay the normal facilities charges because now the improvement's in place. Everyone that comes in has to pay normal facilities charges. So even if, hey, all the intersections I'm doing are work fine. They look great. You still have to pay that transportation impact fee because you're affecting the overall roadway still. And that's where we use that money to upgrade things like Rotten Road, build a roundabout, build a, you know, a loop, build a light. Those are the things we use.
So every business has to pay this traffic impact fee?
A new business opening, um, that has a new building.
A new business open, new building.
Because they, they have to pay an impact fee. If a building's already there, so say you move into a building that's already there, they've already paid impact fees when they built that structure. That you coming in as a business don't have to.
That's a one-time thing.
A one-time impact fee you pay when you build that building. Now, if you expand the building, you might have to increase your impact fees. Um, if you change the use of that building, there could be an offset. Normally that doesn't happen unless you're going from something like, I can imagine if Walmart went to something, I don't know what it costs. Walmart has a bunch of trips registered to it. So maybe they went to like a giant trampoline park. A trampoline park probably will not generate as many trips as Walmart. So they would have credit of impact fees. So they could do something else on there that they wouldn't have to pay. They would get credit for future use if they needed to, because Walmart built those impact fees. Now vice versa, say a trampoline park was there and Walmart goes, we're buying this, we're going in, using the same building. Walmart's going to generate a lot more trips than a trampoline park probably would during peak hours. So they would end up paying that difference in impact in traffic, how many more trips you're generating.
Wow.
Yeah. Here's an example. And it's kind of hard to see this, but this is Berry Valley. You got it. This is a, uh, one council just recently rezoned. This is their traffic impact analysis and they have a zoom in on the three intersections here. And it's hard to see, but you can see here's a light and they show how many right turns there are, how many left turns there are. Um, how many straight through trips there are. So it shows on here, it's hard to see, but here's like 13. So this biz, this town homes right here, or sorry, this apartment right here is going to generate 13 right turns at the Toma Boulevard light. They're going to generate two right turns at the Berry Valley intersection. And this is a peak PM hours. Yes. So from the hours of four to six PM, which is what we hyper focus on.
These are just predictions.
These are their predictions from their traffic impact report. Yes.
Could you say landmarks too? Is that like Burelli's and then?
Burelli's is right here. The Medical Plaza is right here. Um, tornado alley is right over here.
That's the other red dot is like where you would turn in for that daycare where those new complexes are. Okay.
Correct. And then the new apartments are right here.
She, she knows where we're at now.
Yeah, you got it. You got it. You, if you do a run, sometimes you run down here and you go, when you turn around.
Yes.
He doesn't like to run. Come on.
So it's showing all these trips generating and that, and that's how they prove their impacts and they can show these intersections, this is what we're affecting and this is what's happening. So you can see inbound, they're going to have 64 vehicles per hour. So during the hours of four to six, they expect 64 people, and this is used by modeling traffic engineers that know that this is what it generates with this many apartments. So 64 people will be driving into this site per hour while 38 will be leaving the site per hour between the hours of four to six. Well, this is, this we send off to the third party and they go, yes, we agree with these numbers. And then they would pay the normal traffic facilities charges of, you know, 68 trips, if that's what they're, 64 trips is what they're generating. Um, that's what they would pay for.
So that would be their traffic impact fee.
Yeah, would be based on those amount of trips they say they're generating, which in this case is 64, right? Um, or 64 plus 38, depending on how to do it. And if we disagree with it, then our consultant would say, hey, here's why we disagree with you. You think you're doing these things. Now say that this intersection, Toma Boulevard, which is one of the better intersections in Yelp, say they were generating so many trips, this intersection failed. Meaning that cars couldn't make left turns or the delay gets too long. Meaning that cars couldn't make left turns or the delay gets too long. So the way an intersection fails is when the delay gets too long. If someone's waiting to light and you're like, okay. Okay, I've gone through six cycles and I'm still here, right? Once they get to a certain distance, it's called a failing intersection. They would have to do an improvement to that intersection. Either one, build something that could make those trips no longer fail, or two, build another road that could let these trips go around. So they're no longer waiting that long. Okay, any, and the TIA has more information than this, but this is the meat and potatoes of it. This is your, you know. The middle of your smash burger. This is your meat. This is the important part of it. Any questions about the TIA? Cause we're going to move into the next kind of topic.
Does the TIA actually make recommendations like you just said?
Yes.
Is it, okay.
Yes, it does. It does totally, deja vu. It does totally make recommendations based on, um, their, their consultant will say. This should be a roundabout and that'll fix this, or it can be a light, or you can put in a left turn lane or out of stop sign. These will be all things that fixes. Sometimes their TIA will leave it open and say, this intersection's failing. What does a city want us to do about it? And then we can recommend do a, I'm gonna come out with another acronym, do an ICE, intersection control evaluation. Um, to see what needs to be done with that intersection. Similar what we're doing at Long Meyer right now is we started the intersection control evaluation for Long Meyer and five ten. Because we don't know if a light or a roundabout would be better there. I think a light would be better, but I, let's go through the evaluation, make sure it makes sense. The worry of a roundabout is you have to take a lot of property and there's some, an older business there that's pretty awesome. It's been there for a long time. We wouldn't want to do, you know, ruin that business by building a roundabout. So. A light will probably work, but we still have to go through the evaluation because Wazdot requires it too and it's on their highways. Questions about this? Damn, here's the mind blowing part. So one thing that had been mentioned was. What's, what's traffic in Yelm been like through the years? How many trips are going through Yelm? Um, TRPC, as you'd notice, I cited my source. This is was, was dot historical numbers provided by TRPC. Um, and it, the numbers from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one and twenty three are ours that we've done. So this goes all the way back to nineteen ninety eight. So the circles, the purple circles on here or where Wazdot evaluates the numbers, and this is just people traveling this way towards McKenna because. The other direction normally doesn't have any issues. So I didn't want to focus on that where I wanted to focus on the backup of the McKenna Bridge. So in nineteen ninety eight, the amount of trips passing through these two intersections, or they only did one on this one. It was right here. So it was fifteen thousand. Let's fast forward to two thousand nine because they had data on both. So nine thousand six hundred people were passing through the intersection here. Seventeen thousand were passing through in twenty, uh, two thousand nine. Fast forward to twenty twenty three, we changed our data point. To these two spots because we have a bypass now. We didn't have a bypass back then. So we now have the data point, ten thousand people are passing through this intersection here and sixteen thousand are passing through this intersection here going eastbound. So the part that astounded me or astounded me is nineteen ninety eight, we're only one thousand more trips going eastbound through Yelm. Now today than we were in nineteen ninety eight and you're like.
Plus we've diverted almost ten thousand people going the other way, right?
No, so if you, let's take it twenty, two thousand nine. So this is the numbers in two thousand nine. These are the numbers in there. So four hundred more trips. And one thousand less trips in twenty twenty three going through. And so that, that, these are the data numbers, people actually passing through. So why? In your mind, you're like, well, how can that happen? I, I live in Yelm. There's more people living in Yelm. How is this happening? So here's, here's my. Opinion and kind of my thesis of why this is happening. One is people in Yelm are not utilizing, people living in the city limits are not utilizing these two roads to get to and from places. So the people utilizing these two roads to get to and from places are people that don't live in Yelm or are passing through Yelm. Which means that these trips haven't changed, even though Yelm's grown. Because people aren't using these roads that live in city limits. Now that's just my thesis. The other thing is I've lived here a long time, as many of you have. And I remember when I would leave Yelm High School in two thousand one in my car. Um, so I would, I would, I would have to wait, school out one fifty, I wouldn't be able to leave. The school until two thirty. Even at two thirty, I'm turning right into a traffic jam. So I would just stick around till like three and. I can say nowadays, like I can get faster from Yelm High School across the way because I can drive back roads. So is, if people that have just moved here in twenty thirteen or twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen go, why is the traffic so bad? The traffic has been bad. It's not something new. It's not, and not, and all of you that live here know that. The traffic hasn't. Become bad all of a sudden. It's nothing we're doing. It's, the traffic has been bad. So this evidence shows that the traffic's just as bad as it was. Not that the traffic's good. It's just as bad as it was. It is not improving, but it's not getting worse with the construction we're doing. And I think that's important to notice. So. I'm going to come to kind of a conclusion of what this means. It still means we need to fix traffic. This doesn't. Change the problem that, hey, cool. The problem's not getting worse. You just keep letting the fire burn. It's not burning anyone else's building. Keep letting our, no. We can still fix traffic, but it's not our growth that's causing these issues, which is a good thing. Cause a lot of people are worried. Why are we permitting all these houses? Why are we permitting these apartments? It's going to keep causing issues whereas we can see, we've had the biggest explosion of growth in the last three years. And with the numbers have gone down. Which is, I know COVID is probably responsible for a little bit of that, but that's, that's, that's impressive. So. Any questions about that map? I'm gonna go to a next slide. They'll kind of give you some direction.
I would concur with that because that's why I never see, I was against that, uh, reader board right there because I don't drive that.
Yeah.
I don't drive through that intersection because of traffic.
Yeah, and I mean, think of that when you, all of you driving home. I bet you very few of any of you are going to drive on the main highways to get home.
All the way.
No, that's just, it's just a, it's a cool, I thought it was very, it's very cool evidence base that you can see what's going on and that's. You can't argue, these are the numbers. These are actual traffic counts from Wazdot's historical record and then our traffic counts. These are the num, these are legit numbers. Okay, so this is where, what to do next or where to go next. Um, and that's, this is why we're talking about. So we need to continue. I think this proves more than anything. We need to continue construction of interior back roads. So the connectors, Mazman connecting, um, those little back road connectors that we use. As city people to get around is what we need to continue to build. We need to continue, which the mayor's done a great job and all of you have done a great job pressing legislature to construct the loop because if all these trips are. Not from Yelm, the loop is going to divert them around. So they'll be stuck on the loop, but we can drive more freely through Yelm. Um, we need to continue work on the southern loop. Example given, right? If we can take another set of trips that are going left and pull them off. That's even better. Or trips that are coming through and going right. Even better. So continue work on the southern loop and work through what we can do. And then the other part, which I know you're gonna love, is keep upgrading the infrastructure sidewalks and street parking. If we can add sidewalks and let people walk places that live in Yelm. Heck, then traffic is less effective. When you can walk to the places you want to go, or you can park nearby or park in another parking lot and walk to those places and not, and avoid that main road. So. And I got this beautiful guy looking at the road and all the questions down the road.
So I actually have written down my notes, Cody.
Yeah.
You said that very same thing. So I've been working at Barney Lake and Barney Lake is the size we're going to be.
Yeah.
And they have developments that we're going to have here in the near future. And seeing their real construction and their traffic, I was like, we really need to be pressing that. Southern bypass now because it took, what, thirty years to get the bypass now?
Hmm.
So to get that other bypass in.
Thirty years and counting.
Yeah, we need to start, yeah, we really need to be working on that. Because seeing what Bonnie Lake has to go through and what they have done and. Um. Yeah, because I haven't been, worked in my lake in for a while because you know, I, I work all over the place. And so it's been a while since I've been in my lake and then I was like, oh my gosh.
Traffic's been bad for a while over there.
Yeah, by like, yes, but the amount of houses are in there now compared to, I haven't worked in my lake in a while.
Yeah.
I was like, oh my gosh, the developments and they got some cool developments in there, housing developments, but, and some cool roads that they put in. But yeah, we got three left turn lanes on the four ten and they're full of cars. And they're the size of Yelm's going to be in a few years. So it's like, you know, I really caught my attention this week of. Oh, Barney Lake is where we will be real quick. And we really need to be working on that.
These loops will help, both of them will.
I see people walking down the street and they're working the form like Burger King, like Safeway, like Jack and the Box. I see them walking down the street a lot. And so they utilize the streets, the crosswalks, sidewalks to get to work. Um, it's important to make sure that happens.
Unless they live on a hundred and third past Yelm Creek. And then they don't walk because there's, I walked from Mr. Doug's to the senior center. You literally are out in traffic. There's no way to get across that bridge without walking into traffic. I think that's something we probably. For a pretty big liability.
Yeah, and our goal, like, we're really focusing the next two years and council, thank you for that, putting the budget on getting more sidewalks. You'll hear about that in just a second too, the legislative, we're trying. That's our goal is put more and more sidewalks in places.
Is that county though, right there?
No, that one is still city limits up until Grove Road. And the Grove Road, it kind of like does a weird county owns half of it.
Oh, what about tranquility there though? That's.
Tranquility is, yeah, county.
It's part of the, um, yeah, what, what's it called? The, um.
Yeah, the mass annexation.
Yeah, we're going to massive one, so.
Yeah. Other questions?
That's really good. Um, my one concern is when you talk about the back roads that we're doing. Uh, I know there's cities out there like Spokane and others that are a lot larger. They have what they call the arterial roads. That are your back roads, not the main road. Um, one of the things we need, I think we should be looking at when we're improving those is making sure at the same time we're not. Um. Cause residents have complained of the high speed.
Yeah.
We need to be cautious of, you know, utilizing tactics that are out there of making sure that. It's going to be thirty five that somebody's not all of a sudden racing through there at fifty. I mean, it's wonderful. Tooma Terra is a wonderful road. That's a nice, good drag strip. So, you know, these are some things that we should consider when we are, as we're doing these improvements, is making sure that we're still making it safe.
That's not a new problem though. You, you build a wonderful, lovely road and. I mean, I like running back there as it was pointed out because it's, it's beautiful and it's just quiet right now. And I mean, it's, um, but. When things are built up, then of course there's going to be more safety measures that literally can happen right now. I mean, there's a lot of.
Slowed down.
That's a natural.
It would be safer.
Natural thing. It's organic.
Consider jogging.
Would also be safer for those people that are traveling fifty in those thirty fives if they wouldn't put the manhole covers right in the tracks.
I mean.
That's really dangerous.
As we're trying to slow them down with it.
Yeah, it's not the speed that's dangerous.
It's those darn covers.
Things that throw you off. Hit them at seventy, they pop up. It's pretty cool.
I mean, you just, I mean, you just can't control.
Start a car repair fund. I want my suspension looked at.
Only do so much.
And we give out some money for that.
Yeah, I'll take it great. Thank you. Dollars at a time.
Thank you guys. What we have for the legislation.
Well, we have a legislative agenda discussion here. Uh, we have some recommendations that we think that would benefit the whole city as far as getting funding for different projects. Some are bigger priorities. Um, like Cody said, one of the biggest, um, priorities and we know from council as well from yours, that you want more sidewalks. Um, particularly the one by Ford Stevens. And so that's one of them that we are, um. We are recommending that we, um, seek funding for. It's what, about four hundred thousand or so?
Yeah, that's what we estimate to go from middle road where it ends to railway to, and road and road so that you can have a full walking path for students at Ford Stevens.
Where are the recommendations coming from?
From the administration, myself, Cody, Todd.
Just want to clarify.
TIA.
Um. So that's one of the projects, um, and we would seek funding from the transportation budget on that one. The Veterans Memorial, um, which Park is working with us on already. Um, we'd like to continue that with, um. Not just the veteran memorial, but also the sidewalk improvements on that, in that area as well. Um, on Mill Road is right by, um, Mill Pond and, um, Ridge Lane. As well as our, um, park over there's. And then, um, third, what's it, was that the couplets or that, um, the one way? Do we, what was the, when we were asking federal, we're going to ask federal.
The federal, right? No, road is good, but yeah, it was, that, it was, it was couplets for federal because it's a lot more money.
So the sidewalks and the veteran memorial would both be state ass, uh, sidewalk with transportation budget, veterans memorial and the capital budget. The couplets here, the one ways that we've been talking about in combination with the, um, activated alleyway of this whole downtown area. Um, that we would try to get, how much funding was it?
Ten million for federal.
Big ask, but we haven't ever had a, a big, um. A big set of funding, grant funding from the feds, um, for transportation. It's mainly been state funding that we've got some are bigger projects like the Yelm Loop. Um. So I, it is a big ask, but also when Strickland's office is, uh, uh, being pretty proactive. And so is, uh, Senator, was it Murray's office?
Yes, Campbell's office.
That, um, reached out to us, um, asking what, what can we do to help? That's the major project that. I won't get completed without major funding either from the state or the feds. Um, but being such a large project, it makes more sense that the federal, um, funding would be more prepared for that. Cody, is there anything you want to add on any of those projects?
Just a couplets. So it's called the, you know, one way couplets, but it also adds the connection from Mazman to fourth, fourth avenue turns into a one way. You get sidewalks through all of these areas out here that don't have sidewalks. You get on street parking through all of these areas that don't have on street parking. It just really cleans up this from fourth to first street, like that fourth to first street just turns into, you know, I would say an oasis.
So which one turns into a one way?
Uh, this will turn into a one way this way.
Yeah.
And then Mackenzie will turn into one way that way.
So fourth would be two lanes?
Fourth will be a one way because it's so narrow. It's thirty feet. So you have a one way with on street parking on both sides.
So would be only towards the street or into?
It'd be from, turning in from the street, you would go one way all the way down and then would turn into a two way on Mazman and a two way on Washington, that can, or Mackenzie that connect.
Mackenzie's a one way right now. No, it's two way.
Yeah.
It should be a one way.
It should be. Yeah, so in four streets is weird. So what happened in, God bless the people in nineteen twenty four? Where they platted Mackenzie and they platted the other one. They didn't give us sixty footer right away. They gave us thirty foot of wire right away.
That's why it's so narrow.
That's why it's so narrow. So we can't build a full road without demolishing half of the homes. So compromise, we can do a, a one lane road with parking on one side. So you have eleven foot travel lane. Uh, you know, nine feet of parking plus ten foot shared use path sidewalk and lights and all that. And that would be a good travel. Four street, so right, coming off of four street, right where the daycare is and PTL two Excel. So it's, it's just, when you look at how it models really well as a one.
So when you, uh, if you, if you guys don't mind. Um, when you're talking about the, the Mazman going through and tapering down to the one lane. You're talking about going through an area that has no development right now. So has it been, has there been any discussion of perhaps reaching out to the property owner there? And seeing if we can in fact, run it through just because that'll, I don't have to tell you how much traffic, but that'll alleviate as far as off the main drag here.
Yeah, so what, fourth street would be a one way, but Mazman, because there's, like you said, no development, we can obtain right away. I think we need. About fifteen feet of right away at the very end to just turn it into a full two lane road. So it'll be a two lane road there. Whereas four street would be a one way. That way someone could theoretically go off Mazman, come back around third and they could. Wee, they could do circles or if they had to get, they pass their home and they could come back around.
No, Cody, where in your plan is, uh, Mazman going to connect to Clark?
That's a lot farther out and that's because of a lot of homes. This will be the first step though. Once we get here, now the next punch through is Clark.
We're going to do the annexation and get that property in city limits and stuff like that too.
And, and plus you get, maybe steps of time, but that is the ultimate goal is to get it through to Clark at some point.
Awesome.
Get through to fourth and we will punch through to Clark.
Punch it through. Punch it hard.
Any other questions, comments on any of those?
So would third street be a one way?
No.
Just fourth?
Yeah, second, third will be two ways because they have enough room.
Okay.
Um, and I, if I want, I'll bring you the whole modeling. Um, Mackenzie will be a one way going this way. It already is set up like that with the angled parking.
In front of the police building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Washington will be a one way going this way.
Okay, I just got it. My head just literally turned to that.
There's a little weirdness that'll, we'll have to figure out with Washington off of, uh, First Avenue, right next to Tim's Pharmacy. Because turning that into a one way kind of locks people in. So Washington may not turn a one way until right here. It may be a one, it may be a two way coming off of first street because of people in Tim's Pharmacy drive. So we don't want to hurt a business by doing it. It may just be a one way this way.
Well, this will alleviate traffic.
It'll, the people down, local people in Yelm will really appreciate the on street parking and the way they can get around down here.
Universal parking space. This is a, oh my god.
Hundreds, hundreds of parking spaces because you're talking, it turned into a one way and all of, you get one, a parallel on one side and angle parking along the other. Maybe even back in angle.
Maybe back in parking.
We'll look at it then. We'll look at it. Yeah, it'll all be looked at. It's a really exciting project.
Do you have any idea or any plans on what's going to happen be, uh, down, further down third street beyond Mazman where it's, gets. Super narrow, super. I mean, it's literally, you can see base, and I'm basing it off of where the, the, um. Water meter is on the, on that left side of third street. That's way up in the yard. So I have to assume being that narrow, that road's so narrow. We've got, uh, right away.
We have enough right away for everything but fourth and the end of Mazman. So I've, I've checked all their, my, fourth avenue doesn't have enough and Mazman doesn't have enough.
What I'm talking about is beyond Mazman on third where it starts heading back into that neighborhood. It tapers down. Significantly, if you have any, have you thought, put any thought into that at all?
Not into that. We just focus mainly on this core of what it is. Yeah. I'm sure there's some people back there that want access and we're going to hopefully give them some access. It's going to be a running pass or something.
It's all beautification.
So beautiful.
You'll love it.
Hyper grants. Hyper grants.
That's your answer?
I'll tell you about that. Major report.
All right, um, well, first of all, I'm looking forward to Christmas in Park, our centennial, um, documentary coming out on Monday. Uh, Christmas in, Christmas Park is Friday night, uh, with the master merriment, turning on our water, um, water tower lights. At five P M.
Five P M.
Five P M, and then the parades at nine P M, uh, seal. Nine, nine P M, nine, I just brought a Christmas. You'd still see us over at home, oh, this park will be done by then.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, it, it's gonna look a little different, but it's gonna be good this year. I, I think there's gonna be a lot of, um. Now, there's a lot of businesses supporting this, um, Mr. Doug, thank you. Um, so there's a lot of business involved, a lot of new Christmas lights. And, um, it's, we have a fun-packed, um, agenda, so I'm looking forward to that. And Youth of the Year will be announced and, um, it'll be fun, too. Um, other than that, the only other thing, um, ultimate grasp and sound, you know, that you should have got last night. Regarding the video recording and streaming of our study sessions, um, I know council has been discussing this this past year or so and. Um, I believe it is time to go ahead and, um, take a formal vote on this if that's what council wants. And, uh, we can go ahead and, um, put this on the agenda for next week. At our next council meeting, if there's any, um, discussion now, you have free, have at it. Or if you, if you, what's, if you want more information, if you want requesting, um, additional information about other. What other cities are or anything like that, let us know now, and we'll try to have that ready for discussion and, um. Vote at the, um, next city council meeting.
Will you not be able to check the email?
I have not, and I have not checked my email, I don't know what you're referencing, but I believe you're talking about whether or not we. Video record our study sessions?
Correct.
Cool.
Yeah, less formal and, yeah.
Yep, um, RCW does allow for, uh, let me check, thank you for the notes, Kathy, um, it does not require us to video record. Um, it is recommended and suggested that we do, um, encouraged, but. Um, it's not necessarily what we have to do, um.
However, minutes have to be taken.
Sure, yep.
Does have to be out there for.
Minutes do have to be taken.
Trans- uh, transparency.
Right, it's still open to the public.
But minutes are, and Ms. Lindmeyer, you can correct me on this, the minutes are so-and-so brought up such topic. No details into it, not, not word for word what was said or anything else, and.
Are you asking or telling her?
I'm, I'm asking her to verify, because this is. But, um, am I correct about that, that they become very cryptic on trying to understand?
Minutes are action minutes, and that is, that is the recommendation for meeting minutes is that they are minutes. Uh, we don't record in the minutes what everyone says. We just re-record the action or the items, the, the items that were discussed, but we do not record what everyone says.
Not transcribed, but a topic kind of notation.
Is that, uh, the minutes, are they transcribed off of an audio recording? Is this something that's happening in real time or are we record, or is somebody recording that and then taking minutes off that recording?
I take notes during the meetings, um, and do those, but there's plenty of times when I do have to go back, I do go back to our. Recordings, um, and re-listen to certain areas if there's things that I didn't get clearly or didn't understand. So there are times when I'm working on minutes that I do go back and re-listen to the meetings.
I do, oh, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just curious if that would be, if that would work, audio recording, taking your notes, and then if you do need to go back, being able to reference the audio or is it. Is it critical that you have the video, uh, part of it as well that, you know, I mean.
I mean, for minutes, either one would work.
Yeah, that's what audio recording, we do have to, um, keep that record. For six years.
The same as, I mean.
Yeah. And the same is just another.
For me, uh, uh, just to, uh, put up. Why wanting to keep the recording, whether it's audio or video. I actually reference the study sessions. I come back to them when we're getting ready to do the vote. Because if I had a question for Director Colt, Mr. Stansel, or somebody, and I go, okay, did I get my answer? If they said, hey, I will come back to you with the answer, now I know, nope, I haven't received my answer, I can reach back. I can also. Get a recollection of what everybody else had to say, so that then I can kind of go, okay, sitting here, I came in with one point of view. And I heard some other good things, so yes, I can, you know, we can talk about those things. And, you know, it's also the people, residents of Yelm, the transparency. That the study sessions, the opportunity to educate them on the, on what we're about to vote on. You know, they hear, like, when we talked about the traffic circle, they heard the concern from Councilmember Wood of. Hey, um, why are we not going to five? Well, here's the reason. The traffic studies, Director Colt did a really nice job of saying the trick, the studies, everything, so those questions are answered. And so when we go, when we went to vote on it, we'd have to talk about those things ever again. So now the study session is educating, is a tool to help educate the public on why we're making decisions we're making. Why we're doing the things, because that's when we get to ask the questions. Because if we don't do that and we're about to make, you know, six hundred and forty acres, if we spend a study session. Talking about six hundred and forty acres, it's open to the public, nobody came, comes to sit in the audience, and then it comes time for us to vote on what we're about to do. Could you imagine the uproar of if we decided to go a particular route because during the study session, we all worked together, we came up with an idea? But it goes against what people have been fighting for. Now they're gonna say we've done a deal behind closed doors. That is not for what the public wants, but yet if they have that recording, they can go to the recording, they could watch it. And they can see what was discussed, why we're making a decision, and they can get educated from it. Otherwise, we start extending our meetings, our, our regular meetings, because we have to kind of ask some of those same questions again.
We always extend our regular meetings, but, no, I was just gonna say, I don't really care about recording, like, they can record if all they want, but. I don't like doing our study sessions in this formal setting, right?
Yeah, like, maybe we could, I mean, address. Maybe we could address. Sitting different, I know we did this before and I really bumped my leg on this, so we're not moving these desks again, but.
I don't care if we record this thing and then put it on YouTube later as an audio or video recording or whatever.
Okay, I don't, I, I just feel like somehow we need to, um. Maybe announce or, or, I mean, state that our study sessions are more of an informal and it's a discussion to kind of. Maybe like at the beginning, maybe at the end, I'm not really sure how, but I, I mean, obviously this is a spot to brainstorm, right? But, um, to make it a little more, we've worked so hard to become a bit more transparent, whether people take. Take advantage of that or not, uh, the six forty, the study session from September twenty-fourth. Um, that, literally on YouTube, there's twenty-five hundred views, I mean, that's. That's kind of a smoking hot, right? So I don't know that.
City government, that's a lot.
Right, yeah, I don't know that that's. I don't know that I'm partial or impartial to.
Audio back there, and that's why we were just gonna go back there.
Audio?
Yeah, don't we have a recording back in, in that room?
We have the ability to, to do that, to record and. We, we did move, um, for a minute back there, we used the owl to video record and stream, um. It was a little more difficult, um, staff presentations and general presentations for like, um. Agencies and stuff like that, we did some presentations, it just, it wouldn't have been big enough for that, now is one of the reasons.
We don't need, uh, that PowerPoint, and in my opinion, been.
For presentations?
Yeah, sorry. I've been, yeah, I was reading a book the other day, the guy was talking about it, I was like, yeah, it's some good points. About, uh, PowerPoint and how it's overused and I, like I said, even tonight, I don't have my glasses, so I can't see it. If I forget my glasses, it's like, uh, I listen, I take notes.
Our Joes.
Then he can't see them.
Take, bring a long table here, three chairs on one side, three chairs on the other, Mayor Pro Tem sits at the head. You guys can still sit behind us, you can still give us our briefings, we can all sit there and look right there. And we now have that informal, let's sit down, talk.
Conversation.
We'll try to bring a couple of options, um. We'll try to bring two options at least to the council meeting for, for council to decide on. I think it's gonna be. Um, two that are, one is the option that we do not audio or, well. We, we have to have some compliance regarding, um, accessibility, and I, um, Kathy, do you, um. Do you know those exact ones for accessibility reasons?
I don't, but I do know if we had someone come in, if you were hold, to hold in the, like, in the back room, there's no room in there with the larger table now. There's no room for seating if public wanted to attend, and if you did have someone come in, say in a wheelchair, they would not be able to maneuver in that room.
So that, those, I mean, there are some of those ADA concerns, but. I, I think that's gonna be the, the two options we're gonna have. One is that we're just remove video recording. And the other is maybe making it more informal with like, um. A, a different setting, and I don't even know if that would, um, require a resolution, but, um.
About back when we did it at the other building. The room next to the courtroom. Yeah, cause that was in kind of a circle almost, and it had more room.
Yeah, that was a nice room.
I thought you were gonna say. Tables.
I, I would highly suggest that we don't, I, I think it is a step back in transparency if we do take away the. Ability and accessibility for the public to watch and view it. I, I do think that is an issue, and I do think that if the residents had a, a vote on this. They would say we do not want to have no access now to study sessions in forms of the ease and, um. Accessibility they have currently. I mean, I might be wrong on that, but I, I don't believe so.
We just turned the screen off, so we don't know we're being recorded.
I mean, you could do that, too, and that's. But either way, I think we'll go ahead and have, um, it, it's been brought up by council now a lot, and, uh, I think we should. Have a, an actual vote on it, or we can move forward one way or the other. Is that fair?
Um, whether it should be recorded or not, or a vote on how to bring it down a notch, so.
I think we'll have two motions that will, like I said, that would be made available to council, and if a third, you know, if council wants to do a different option, they can. Make a, a different motion, but, um, from what I'm hearing, there's. Um, at least some council members that want to not video record study sessions, we can make that an option. Am I, am I mistaken on that? Is that?
I think you are correct in the fact that, that is, the, the thing we're looking for is the audio and video recording, it's not required. And giving us the opportunity to look at, I think that's exactly what's being asked.
So that'll be one option, and the other will, um, be to figure out how to make it. Less formal and more of a, um, roundtable kind of discussion.
I mean, that's, yeah, I think that's what all the options are, is how to. And change, like, do we have to get rid of these desks, maybe even look at that? So, so we can make this more marginal, because it's not very marginal, you know, moving these things around. But, you know, is this, this not conducive to this, the use of this real, like?
It's sounding more and more than it's just the video, that that's the biggest decision, whether we record, audio and video record versus not.
I, just to throw it out there, I think that you, for clarification. I, I, I don't agree with Brian on what the purpose of the study, study session is for, I don't believe, we're here to educate the public. I think our study sessions are for us to get educated and for us to be able to discuss. And, and deliberate and break down what we're talking about, feel comfortable asking questions where I think being. Uh, in the spotlight continually, I believe, uh, and of course, I'm, I'm not speaking for myself, but. I believe there's people that wouldn't be comfortable just openly asking a question out of fear of you looking ignorant or.
Scrutiny.
In tonight's discussion on all these items, do you think that there would have been different discussion if the video wasn't recording?
Well, I'm not saying in this particular occasion, I'm just saying in general, especially in, in the cases where you, you know, where they. May have a brand-new council that, you know, is still learning the ropes and may have some questions, but due to the fact that they know that they're being. You know, monitored, not only in just the, 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 uh, the, the council meetings, but also the study session. It doesn't leave any opportunity to, to relax and actually feel confident and comfortable in asking your questions without feeling like maybe. You know, you're gonna be scrutinized, you know. And, and that's why I think the, uh.
It's part of the job, though, is the public.
It's important to know that we don't make decisions in study sessions, we just discuss things. And therefore, like I said, I don't believe that's the opportunity to educate the community, I think if the communities.
Talking about traffic impacts, you don't think that the average person could benefit from that or would want to know that?
Uh, no, 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 I, I do, I do think they would, and I think there's an opportunity, they're called council meetings, that's when the public is invited to come and participate. Where the study sessions, they're technically, they're not even allowed to participate according to the way I learned how these things were supposed to be laid out.
We wouldn't have a presentation like that, and then also as an action item at the next meeting, we try to get all this stuff that we learn. You know, about the different, um, upcoming items at study session.
But we do get a presentation of that, it's not just a matter of we get a full presentation in the study session, then we come to a, a council meeting and they say, hey, remember what we talked about in the study session? How do you vote? It's not like that, we get an additional presentation and each one of us is guilty of continuing to ask questions.
We're not gonna present this again, what we saw here, that's not gonna be at a city council meeting, the public wouldn't be able to see that.
I understand that, but there will be, not, I mean, the, 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 the public that is interested to that level. Will be here. Kathy, how many people are watching online right now?
Two thousand. I'm just kidding.
There's a total of six participants on the Zoom right now. But the majority, that doesn't include, that only includes, uh, that does not include if people are watching it live on YouTube right now, that number doesn't show.
And I'll tell you, I'm not talking about us not recording or, or doing things secretly, uh, but I, I don't see why we can't audio record this. And have it, uh, even on, uh, even on the YouTube media platform as well. As an audio recording with a picture of the City of Yelm's logo on there, as we all discussed this. You know, rather than every, like I said, it's the spotlight aspect of it, you know, you, you, it. Get into your head and start, you start realizing, oh, God, everybody's watched, people are watching me, and, you know, that can shut a person down. I mean, I've, I've experienced it myself, where, you know, you get, you creep, creep into your brain and.
Recording audio only or recur, recording audio and video. You're still recording, so why not just keep it the way that it's been going, and let's just make ourselves comfortable, and if we have to, you know.
I guess the, I guess the difference between your perspective and mine is, I've had the, the opportunity to experience it the other way. Where it wasn't audio, it wasn't video recorded, we were in a, in a separate one-room, we weren't sitting in the chamber like this as if, if we're in a. A third council meeting of the, or of the month. Um, it was a, it was a study session, I think you were there as well. In fact, you were there, you were there.
Remember the much more casual days, why don't we guess, you know?
Carrie, you were on council at that point, I was, but yeah.
Yes.
I remember.
The roundtables we have in the community center, if you rolled one out once a month and put it in the room with six chairs. And then did the minimal legal recordings that's we need, just to make it all legal, so it'd be enough, wouldn't it? Here's what I'll say, I know that there's. Sad, you can still, we can still be. There's a, there's a moment of awareness that comes over me when I hear the, the thing speak. Recording in progress. All of a sudden, I have to go, okay, be professional, don't be stupid, don't be dumb, say something smart, blah, blah. There is a real emotion and sense there, what I do appreciate about the non-recording of audio and video. Um, is there is this freedom to deliberate and actually ask more constructive questions and even get criticism. Without feeling like I'm gonna get scrutiny. Now, I understand the transparency, and then maybe there's a few people in the public who want to watch this and, and observe. But then the only people who really observe things are people who on Facebook blowing up trolls, and all of a sudden we get fifty people in this room. Why didn't you watch the study session? Sounds like they didn't watch the study session.
Well, I hear there's a disconnect in what the study session's for, because I'm, I'm like Tracy, so you say it's for. To inform the public about what's happening.
No, no, I didn't say that.
Right, that's why I heard.
You're just hearing me.
Okay, that's, that's what I understand, was you, we're just informing the public.
There's multiple items that it's, it checks boxes for. One of the reasons that we have study session is to inform. In either the council, the public, the staff, the staff is one of the ones that watch it a lot, see what council wants and don't, doesn't like. So when, when they bring it up to, um, um, the committee levels, it's more tailored to what the council would approve, rather than waste all of our times. Um, so it, it's not just council that benefits from these, but for different reasons, for, for, you know, you might take it differently than I might. But everyone, every reason that you think, you know, that you need it for is valid, just like anyone else on council, or myself or staff. But we will put it up for a vote, though, and we'll end this, um, debate once and for all on it, and we'll move forward.
The way I see it, I see like Tracy, it's a point for us as council members to deliberate over these issues we have to vote on here coming up, at least that's. That's the way I think it should be, let's say that.
That's fair.
You know, that's like, okay.
Cause you're, you read that correctly.
These things are coming up, these are, what are you guys' issues, like, talk it out, okay, that's, because you know, it's not a actionable meeting. So we have a little more freedom to talk about, whereas, like, the whole debacle with the code updates, let's take that for example. And we're making motions on something that shouldn't have been motioned, a lot of those things could have been talked about in study session and hammered out ahead of time. All those little fine points, and then we went and had that little issue we had, you know, is this an example?
That's an entirely another topic, is it not? That's an entirely another topic, is it not? But that's more like.
I'm saying if that's an issue for like study sessions to really hammer out a lot of the the details of the things we're gonna vote on.
I'd argue that's more at the committee level, that should have happened, for whatever reason it didn't. And it sounds like you're communicating a lot with Gary on this, so I mean, it's gonna get hammered out one way or the other. Um but yeah.
And another bu- debacle that I personally feel that we really could have handled a lot, a lot better personally. Is the whole issue with the golf course, and I wish I wasn't even ta- taped as I say this right now because of the way it sounds, to your point, Joe. But we were given information in two executive sessions, you you do told us things. And we sat there and we sat there and we did nothing, we walked out and you said a couple of things we didn't discuss, and I think a lot of that stuff was misunderstood. And I would have liked to have talked in a very informal session and made sure everybody understood, cuz I don't think we did.
I wanna be able to call somebody idiot and not have it on public record.
So again, to recap, we won't put this on the agenda for next week and you will have an opportunity to vote on it.
So what's the minimal allowable?
The minimal allow.
Yeah, golf play, that's good.
And it has to be open to the public.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. She said what's the minimum, like these are the minimum. It has to be open.
Will, will discussion or vote?
Last time we had so many studies in chairs. Thanks Steve for coming. You have been more, yeah, this is like the biggest kind we've had at a study session in quite a while.
You know Jake has been here many times, just I mean.
And if you have a problem with video, get over it. It's not. You're being videoed, you have a council session, so what's the difference? If you're having an open conversation. You represent the public, don't be afraid of the public.
Steve, not everybody has your confidence, my friend. Some of these folks come in here with no experience.
That's what I'm saying, get over it, be more competent.
So in the meantime.
And it's okay to share your ideas and your values with the public. Now, if politically, you're concerned about that. I understand that. It's all about. Over there says, we the people, you're representing the people, maximum transparency is always best. You're not going to resent it and you won't have these blowups like you did with the golf courts. If they knew in advance what was going to happen. Perhaps nobody would have even shown up. So communication is what it's all about moving into the future. You gotta have maximum commu- communication with maximum transparency.
Thanks Eve. Um question, Ms. Mayor, since we're moving on real quick, um I didn't see, is are they doing the um? The Hanukkah menorah lighting in the park this year?
Yes, um I believe they set on December thirtieth, but I don't know if that's finalized yet.
Third?
December thirtieth.
Thirty.
It's like the end of Hanukkah.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, but they, there's multiple cities and jurisdictions that they um they do this in, um so they can't do it all on. First night, um I don't know what their schedule's like, um but. That's one they asked for us, so, yeah, they do different cities. I think it's the Olympia, Chabad.
Okay, councilman Mary, initiatives. Anything add?
I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's important that we uh figure out that. Yelm Creek at a hundred and third situation as swiftly as possible. There's nobody walking through there.
I'll go with that, Reid.
You better be paying attention.
Oh, yeah, that's not a route I like to take.
I turned around.
Uh but, so we also have a question.
Do you have the study that was done ten plus years ago in reference to Yelm Creek? When they came out and they looked at why it was flooding, some of the issues. Okay.
Yes, I believe we do.
Kinda take a look at it to. My memory's gone, it's something that future down the road is, what can we do because? Uh if Yelm Creek gets.
Yeah. I I believe it said something about dredging, um there was a lot of. We've discussed it uh about recently, probably a couple of years ago, we'll bring that back up, take a, try to see if we can find that study.
As I said, I, when Mayor Foster was here, I got a chance to read it, I went through it and I brought it back, uh so I know it exists.
Yeah, we'll uh we'll try to find it.
Charge the EPA for it. So I have a question for the council members that voted no last time on the code changes. That's coming up next Tuesday, right? Next week?
January.
Okay, um I was gonna say, um are you getting questions answered or why you voted no? To that.
I voted no because Gary Cooper himself said that it was a little bit scattered and he wanted to firm things up and bring it back to the council.
Not the one we're about to know in motion?
Those are bicycle, um bicycle, um.
I felt like there was just a lot in there. On that too, I always feel like business owners should have some say, uh rather than something imposed upon them as a thing to follow with, especially when it came to bike racks. So uh that's why I voted no was, I'll try to give some business owners some power in that, in that area. And uh again, there was just a lot of things tied into that.
That's honest would be a good opportunity to air your uh. Why against it because, I mean, there's lots of things that's really good, that I think is really good. Um and should be proved, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff in there.
Bike racks, there was entrances on the main. Avenue, there was short-term bike racks and long-term bike racks, or am I saying this right? Storage?
There were a lot of changes to the central business district code.
Yeah, and I mean, so bike storage, great, but there's two different segments of that. And honestly, requiring an entrance on the main avenue, I'm not aware of that at all, there's a reason that it was written. There would, like a young physical therapy, they don't have an entrance on the main avenue. The idea is to get people off the main avenue, we just literally looked at a traffic study. Don't put an entrance on the main avenue, get them off the main avenue so they can turn nicely. There was a lot in that, just like you said.
You know, I have some problem with it too. I come a business in the central business district and build right up against the sidewalk, but my shed has to be five feet off my own fence. I got problems.
You live in a residential zone, not a.
No, we have a central business district.
It isn't central business.
But yours own is different.
But and just in reference to bicycles, all this was, all the bicycle things were, were for new construction. It didn't say anybody who already exists, it was for new construction.
Why are you hung on that? Somebody say what's for somebody else? You keep saying that, why are you hung up on that point?
What point?
That's because that's all it was, it's, it's trying to give clarity, just like as Councilman Kaminsky put it. The, if people understood what was going to happen in reference to the golf course, we weren't looking at buying it. They were looking for permission from us to go and do a study to find out if. By purchasing it with a working well and water rights, that it would be cheaper at the cost. That it was being offered that. I, no, but I'm just saying that the public had no idea. People are are saying, oh, you're gonna pass this that now I have to put a bicycle rack in front of my business, it's like, no, no, this is for new construction was. What that was required for, it wasn't required for people who already have their established business. In other words, PTL would not have to put a bike rack in front of their. Mr. Doug's would not have to put a bike rack because it's already an established business, but if somebody uh. At Burnett and Five Ten would all of a sudden build a business in that want, in that big open want. They would have to put a bike rack.
What if I sell my business to somebody else? Do they got a?
It's established.
If you change of use, you would have.
The restaurant, probably not.
Or it became a.
Probably not.
But that's not the only thing in the code, that's.
Well, no, it's, these, these are some things that we. That's where the public is getting the uh misinformation at times because we're not being clear. Right now, you know, the discussion of, well, I didn't agree with the bike racks, that was only for new construction. I've already talked to a couple of businesses that were concerned about this thing of, hey, you're gonna make me put out a bike rack, and I said, no, it's new construction. Not, your business is not gonna have to put one out, if you choose to put one out later, then you do. But this was for new construction. And that's where we need to make sure that we're, you know, that we are understanding what we're discussing. It's not bike racks in front of all businesses.
But why didn't we understand that?
If I heard, I heard it cuz I even asked that question before the vote, I'd asked, are the bike racks for new construction only? Or for every business? And the response from public service was, they are for new construction only.
Right, and I, I think the problem we ran across was, as these guys are saying, is there was just so much there. And we, and we, we didn't si- sit in a, sit in an environment where everybody felt comfortable asking the right answers because nobody wanted to. We wanted to look like they didn't understand, and that's the dangers in videotaping every single thing we do is people are aware of that.
That discussion was done during.
I don't understand that, but we never talked about it in a study session. We never went into any detail on that in a study session, all of a sudden.
Brought up in a study session, didn't Gary present?
All of a sudden it was in front of us and.
We did multiple.
We had executive sessions on some stuff.
Present, I don't know if it was a study session, but it was brought up multiple. I came to the committee a couple of times, I don't, I don't.
In committee and went to council that night.
Well, I think that's for the, there's so much information there.
So I thought he fixed.
They would take it off the agenda once because there was a bunch of kickback and then they went to.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Came up for a vote, we said no, and it came up for a vote again, and then.
Yeah, so it was brought up twice then, if it was already voted, voted on.
No, it wasn't voted on, it was.
Voted to remove from the.
Well, you can look back at older study sessions as we have recorded and have some references.
You know who's gonna be watching this? Gary.
There you go.
Oh, no, he wants us to pass, he's gonna watch it.
The other thing.
I told him what I wanted to see changed, so I don't know.
An observation is when things go askew and we get stor- stampeded in this room. It's from people, number one, misunderstanding and misquoting what people say and then posting it on social media and everything the heck blows up. That's happened more than.
It happens all the time and you can't control, again, what other people do here or say. All you can do is bring about the best information possible, like if some people actually thought. That that was about existing businesses, like. And I guess if that needed clarification, then great, but. I feel like it was very, to me, I heard it, it was very point blank that it would be everything to do with new business construction in the CBD. I don't understand. How an established business could take that entire resolution, that entire code and. And and think that that was going to be their new um guideline. But, but there we have it, I mean, even amongst council, we've heard it differently.
Sitting in a circle and hammering else, we have a complete understanding of what we're talking about, then make, then make it funny.
Good discussion.
Very good deliberation.
This is great.
Wouldn't have had this discussion if it was recorded.
Right, I just don't know.
It might have been, the council might would have really.
I'd be calling it in by Joe, but that's about it.
Take that off the minutes.
Alright, that's all I got, so we're good?
Anyone else?
Were you satisfied with us? That answer?
I probably gonna vote yes on it, Gary, I haven't seen the final changes. I'm not asking you what you're gonna do, I'm saying what I'm gonna do, if. X happens. Cuz I think, like I said, a lot of it's in uh are good changes I want, that I would like to see, cuz I think they do fix a lot of mistakes that were made. Um overzealous changes, and so, but. You know, I wanna make sure those that also others have voted no, you know, got their questions.
I just don't understand why we have, why we would be in the, even interested in forcing people to have bike racks. If I've got bike traffic, nobody's gotta tell me to get a bike rack. Once again, this is part of owning a business, making these decisions.
He's not gonna ask anybody for help, he's gonna take.
That's, that amazes me that we would consider on something, I mean, that's just over, overstep, but let's control these people and make them. You know, I just, that amazes me. This is, this, there just should be their decision, it's their business, this doesn't impact the city at all whether they put one in or not.
Why require parking? Our car business to provide certain amount of parking.
Now, hold on, that's.
You're already rolling, but you're already drives.
It not necessarily makes sense, but it encourages certain things, behaviors, like for the parking. You want people to park at your restaurant, you don't want people, you only wanna be required to have one spot, cuz no one's gonna walk in.
But my point is, is if I had bike traffic and there was, and I had a a demand for some, some bike parking. It would behoove me as a business owner who's trying to encourage people to come in to provide that to them. I don't need the city of Yelm to tell me, hey, I see you're building a, a new building, you're building a new restaurant, I see that. And because of where you're located and our new regulations that were passed.
Ready to pave your lot instead of have gravel.
That's fine, that's fine.
But you wouldn't do that if it wasn't required, why would you spend the?
No, I would.
You would, but there's a lot that wouldn't.
But I feel the same way on that, if you, if you didn't wanna pay, uh pay your parking lot, I, once again, I believe that's the property owners. I believe that's their perspective. Which is a huge pothole, they better fix it.
Speaking of parking lots, are we, when are we getting our sign?
Where's our solar light?
The solar lights came in this week, um we're in the middle of Christmas in the park, so they'll go up next week is the plan. All the solar lights, so we'll have lighting next week on this, EV chargers are in, as you probably saw. But they're not energized yet, they'll be energized also in the next week or so, and that's when also the uh pre-parking, you know, monopoly sign will go up, so.
Those we're talking about. So we get all these other things, uh so that's also bringing me to another thought, so number one, the solar lights. Uh those ones are on your game side, they just don't get sun, is that why they don't work or are they malfunctioning?
There's one that's over, but there's the other one who does work, the one next to White Horse works, but it's raining quickly, so we turn the settings down on it. It's just because of this, when you get fog days like this, it just doesn't, you know, you don't get enough sunlight over the course of.
And then replacing the picture on the fitness court, we'll do that sometime.
So that, yeah, we have all the materials to replace at the map, they're gonna do a, there's a whole, I'm gonna hold on to something. The whole automated system they're gonna institute now that we're gonna work with them on, we'll probably replace it, and there's the option that we're exploring, they can do a back pad. For like a cheer team, they do a pad on the backside that's like padded, so you could do cheer or gymnastics. I'm sort of looking at maybe doing that, so it's pretty kinda cool. People wanna slide down, they can have a pad. They can have a pad to go, come on, so it's, it's just, yeah, so we're looking at that, we do have the material to replace the whole back thing, that will be happening hopefully next year, I'm just debating if I wanna do it or not. Based on. It's slide resistant for about six months and then it gets tears.
Cody, I drove through Rainier in tonight, and they got beautiful Christmas lights all up and down the street.
Christmas park is currently being set up, yes. Three times as many lights as there was yesterday, so.
Beating us to the punch, Cody, we gotta get on it.
Our lighting is on Friday, come do it.
I'll be.
I'll be there.
I think Rainier, the businesses do. We love Rainier, that's an actual organization versus us.
Wait, private, private businesses without a grant?
Anything else? Steve, do you wanna keep talking or do you wanna? Gosh, go ahead.
Extremely low cars. How about a couple of speakers hanging from the water tower, playing music? At certain events, I'm not talking about twenty-four seven, but Christmas music. At the water tower, it's gonna be more of an attraction and it hardly costs anything.
Maintenance cost, Steve.
What?
Maintenance cost, remember those lights that we got for free? I understand that, but those require.
Lucky your idea, but I think we ought to do it all the time.
Well, you have a house across the street, so they might have.
Curious about our emergency management, too. Where is our?
Yeah, let's get a, let's get a presentation, uh we got one, heat up, you wanna listen, let's let's play the presentation.
Emergency management, I wanna know uh disaster.
Thirty minutes on this emergency management presentation. You got it now?
Yeah, I'm good.